Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hail at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Good evening, Palm Bay. How is everyone doing? Welcome to the 2024 Palm Bay City Council Seat Two Debates. I'm your host and moderator, Kevin Vassiana. I will be pretty much navigating tonight's operation. And you guys know who I am. And welcome, welcome to the platform. For those who are new to the platform, I need a favor, please. So this debate is successful, please like and share this video. If you're on YouTube, if you're on Facebook, hit the like button. Hit the share button, share it to your neighbors, share it to your friends. So the word can get out of what we're doing here. Show me that you support me. It takes a lot of time and hours to put together these questions. And I would like the motivation to keep going. Frankly, that's what I need from you, the motivation to keep going. So please hit the like button, hit the share button. So we can continue this work. I will need to make some formal announcements so you are aware. Seat five, seat five, as you can see tonight, we earlier, we interviewed Jimmy Backus at seven o'clock. And we're unfortunately not able to do a seat five debate. And the reason is because the individuals couldn't come to a decision. And a good time to do that debate. So I have opted to do solo interviews. So any individuals that's running in seat five, if you have not reached out to me yet, please do so. Can I, so I can schedule a time that's appropriate for you. So we can do that one-on-one interview. In regards to seat three, there will not be a seat three debate. And the reason being because the, one of the individuals Chandler needed to do only an in-person debate, which I, as your host, cannot facilitate. I do not have the budget or the means to, to do that. So I told him the only way I can do this is virtual. I'm a one-man show and this is how I operate. I do my things virtually at the moment. And if God spare my life and send me some, and help sends me some funds along the way. Then at some point in time I will venture out. But right now it is all done virtually. So the, there's an option, if he, if he's watching tonight, there's an option for both candidates to appear on the show on a solo. So you can choose to contact me, either candidate Alfie or Chandler and say, I want to do a solo interview. But right now Chandler has opted not to do a debate. Because he only wants to do it in person, which I cannot facilitate. Okay, all right. So with that out of the way, let's get started. Tonight's rule for the debate, each candidate will have two minutes to answer their questions. There will have 30 seconds for rebuttal if they so choose to do a rebuttal. And they will have one minute for opening statement and two minutes for closing statement. These are the rules. I will not take questions from the audience because the question is already set up. So we can hit that one hour mark and you can, guys can go forth and watch the VP debates tonight. So it's neatly set up so we can get this done, hopefully within our timeframe. So I will not be taking feeling questions from the audience. We cannot do that in a debates format, it's not possible. Solo interviews, yes, but not in a debate format. Okay, all right. So let's meet the candidates, let's bring them on stage. Good evening, sirs, welcome to the platform.
Hello. Good afternoon, good evening, Kevin, how are you?
Great, sirs, great, 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 welcome, welcome, welcome. All right, uh, we didn't do a coin toss, so we don't know who's gonna go first. As far as the opening statement, who wants to go first?
Donny can go first. Challenger, man, you can.
All right, you want Donny to go first?
Yeah, he can.
Okay. Thank you.
Hold on one second, Donny, I'm gonna remove myself from the screen. I'm gonna remove Mike from the screen. And Mike, when he's done, I'm gonna immediately put you up on the screen so you can do yours, okay? All right, great.
Kevin, once again, thank you so much for the opportunity, Mike as well. Thank you for the opportunity to answer to this call. Where we have an opportunity to extend and, and, and share a little bit about our vision for the city. Again, my name is Donnie Felix. I've proudly served you for the last four years. I'm again humbly coming before you to ask you for another opportunity to continue serving you. I truly believe I'm passionate about the city of Palm Bay. I'm very vested, that's where my kids are being raised. And now I'm a grandpa, they're proud grandfather. I'm excited to certainly contribute. And I have contributed to the city for, God, since 2008. I was, I got involved, actively involved. Certainly, a political, hold a political office was never in my purview. But as you know, sometime, you know, what you do socially, civically also become a byproduct. The political aspect become a byproduct of what I was doing and with joy. I, I believe I've given a lot to the city. Serve on Park and Recreation Board of over eight years, planning and zoning for three years. So I have a good, I came in, hit the ground running with a lot of experience and understanding. Not saying to my professional, not to count my professional years. 19 years of management with a great, you know, great public supermarket. Also, I was a small business banker and personal banker with Wells Fargo. So all of that, I think, attribute to my performance. I believe if you allow me another four years, I will continue to serve you with honor and integrity. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Donny. All right, Mike, go ahead.
Hello, everybody, my name is Mike Hammer. I'm actually born and raised here. My family is actually one of the founders of Melbourne and West Melbourne and Palm Bay and whatnot. And I'm a father, I'm a husband of two awesome kids, Austin and Jace, both, both boys. I've been a football coach here in Palm Bay and in West Melbourne for the last 22 years. So I've been giving back to the community almost my whole life. I went to EMT school, I went to firefighter school. I was a Brevard County volunteer firefighter. I was actually a Malabar volunteer firefighter until I went to fire school. And as soon as I got done with fire school, Hurricane Katrina hit New Orleans. So I went to New Orleans and gave my time to help survivors there. And when I came back to Palm Bay, I was gonna take my job at the Palm, at the fire department in Palm Bay. And I had been gone for so long that I had to redo my school. Well, my father worked for the city of Palm Bay for 30 years. My grandmother worked for the city of Palm Bay for 30 years. So I took a job in Public Works, working for Public Works. And I started at the ground level and I made my way up to procurement and inventory for the Fleet Services Department. Where I worked for almost 15 years. And I found a little bit of corruption there and actually a lot of corruption. And a lot of things that I didn't want to be part of. So I asked the city if they would fix it. And if they didn't, I was gonna leave and fix it from the outside. Well, they didn't fix it, so I left and here I am trying to fix it from the outside.
Okay, you still have time on the clock, but that's great.
Um, you know, I'm just, you know, I'm just looking to make things, you know, make things better. Give the, give the community a voice. Cause right now I feel, I feel the city doesn't have a voice. And I feel a lot of the things that the cities wanting and needing aren't being addressed. And yeah.
Thank you, sir, thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, with that said, the first question is gonna go to Mike. And so I'm gonna remove, let's, so Donny can hear the question. I want to have both parties on the screen. Palm Bay's population, we're talking about infrastructure, guys. Palm Bay's population is growing quickly and it's putting a lot of pressure on our infrastructure. How would you go about addressing the gaps in the roadways, utilities, the public service? It's so accommodate growth and what's your plan for funding the changes?
So the first thing I would say is a lot of the things that we need to start doing, they're actually starting to do right now. Implementing the proper impact fees, I think, is very, very, very important. And I don't want to address just the raising of them. I want to address attaching the amounts that go to where the designated money goes to is extremely important. I think we should be dealing a lot more with our county. And our county should be more responsible for, for our growth of our roads, especially Babcock Street. As of right now, you know, Babcock Street is one of the most, you know, traveled streets that we have. And it's still two lanes all the way down to the parkway, or all the way down to the parkway from Malabar Road. There's a, a lot of different ways that I think we can be bringing in more money. And I think we can be having a little bit more accountability and having people that are more experienced in their jobs. And accessing the things that we need to do to grow here. The city of Palm Bay only has two Palm Bay roads that are four lanes. We have Port Malabar Boulevard and Emerson. And Emerson's not even four lanes the whole way. And neither is Port Malabar Boulevard. We only have two, two roads in the whole, in 140,000 citizen city that is four lanes. And I, I think a lot of that needs to be addressed. And I think a little bit more experienced staff that is experienced with dealing with the things that we're going through right now. Is going to be a key to moving forward with our change that we need.
Okay, thank you so much, Mike. And so, Donny, it's gonna be your turn.
Thank you so much, Kevin. I, I think it's great, Mike's touched on a lot of good, good point. But what I would say is that, you know, and as Mike said, I mean, a lot of these things are being addressed. What it's important to, to, to speak on is the fact that, so let's go back. I know Kevin, you're very aware and this, this project is dear and near to your heart. I would expect at some point you're gonna talk about that when it comes to infrastructure, your involvement back in 2016. My engagement as well, when you come call me and, and, and with, you know, former councilman Anderson. I know lead the way with the municipal bond to pave the road. I would say, yes, we had a little, a few bumps in the way, but that was a good move. That was when municipal bond for infrastructure was not popular. But because of resident like you and myself, we believe, we, we saw the possibility. We pushed forward and now, you know, over 55%, close to 60% now of all roadways are being paved. Now, it's important, we can say all we want, all these wish lists, right? It costs a lot of money. Find a ways to fund this project is one thing to say, you know, we all know, we all aware they exist. We have the needs and we can visibly see it. If you travel the city in the morning or in the afternoon, especially during the wash hours, we, 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 you know, we, right there. But it's just a matter of how do we fund this project? I can tell you, we have some strong advocate, I'm one of them, the mayor's one of them on the TPO. We sit on the TPO, what we didn't have before previous administration is that we didn't have strong advocate. We got on the TPO three years ago. Those project, the winding of Malabar, which already funded the, the APD is done. We, we currently in the design phase, as Mike touched on, we are, Malabar will be up from Mitten all the way out to the Heritage Parkway out there by Heritage High School. They will be a four lane. It's a matter of, you know, finding a funding, it's extremely expensive, right? Those, those roadway projects are extremely, extremely expensive. I don't think most people understand how expensive they are. Yes, we pay taxes, the revenue is not enough, that's why we have to find other means. That's why we take, I took two trips to DC this year in Tallahassee, concept to trying to work with all lawmakers. To bring those money in to, to address these. But you're certainly being looked at and, and we are finding ways to fix it.
Okay, thank you for your question, any rebuttal from anybody?
I will, I will say this, are we gonna talk about the road bond later?
At some point, yes.
Okay, yeah.
Let's, we, we can go ahead and, and address that now, since we have the board of, we are on that subject. And so let's go ahead and just, just get it out of the way. So my, my concerns and I, and I've shared this with Donny and Mike have probably heard me say this. Is that I, I believe the approach that, um, Lord, I'm getting a brain freeze right now. Forgot his name, former councilman.
Anderson, Anderson. Former councilman?
Yeah.
Yeah, Brian Anderson?
Not that Brian.
No, Santiago?
No, the one that left, the, the, the one that.
Bailey, Bailey, Jeff Bailey.
Jeff Bailey. His approach of, of trying to make sure that we maintain proper reserves for the road bond. Proper reserves for the road maintenance program. At the time, I, I was fully on board in what he was doing. And so my, that's my concern. My question to you guys is what will you do to ensure that our maintenance fund is properly secure? And that we do not go into the piggyback and try to raid it for the projects? So who want to take it first?
Well, the projects, the projects can't, it's, it's not budgetary allowed to, to, to use maintenance funds on a new project. Because, you know, especially with the road bond, the road bond can only be used on, on, on renewing the roads that are there. You are not allowed to expand roads, you're not allowed to do anything. And touching on what he was saying about, about how roads are expensive, when you're going to expand a road. And this is in, I mean, this was, this is when I was in Public Works. It was, it was for every 100 feet, it's $300,000. So it's not a cheap, it's not a cheap task. But the thing is with the road bond, and we got ourselves upside down anyways, because with Public Works. They had a, they hired a company to come in and they actually have a car that looks like a spider on the roof. And this thing drove around all of Palm Bay for almost, almost a full year. And it went through and it said, what's wrong with each, each road? How long it's gonna take, how much it's gonna take? And he prioritized it on which is the worst and which is the, you know, you know, where it needs to go. And it was $250 million. It was supposed to be $250 million to do these streets. How we came up with the number 150? Every single person in Public Works looked at each other and said, that's not enough money and we know it. So I think we're starting off, you know, behind the pendulum already. And, you know, budgetary wise, if you're gonna have something in maintenance, it can't be used, it can't be used to expand anyways.
Okay, thanks, thanks for your response, go ahead, Donny.
Yeah, Kevin, I believe the question was, how are we gonna ensure that the maintenance fund is being funded, right? I believe that was the specific.
That was pretty much the question, yes.
Right, so, so to answer specifically, I can tell you today, Kevin, as you know. I know you've been paying attention to, to the decision we've made in the last three years. This administration assure that we create opportunity to fund and keep a healthy maintenance fund. Where what happened in the last 20 years, where all our roads, roadways got deteriorate to the point where we need to do, you know, 250. Mike mentioned 250 million and, and I'll touch on that, but he is correct. 150 was way on the budget. Again, you know, Kevin, you may be able to tell us where that number came from because you, you had some intel. But, but anyway, yeah, that was way under, under, you know, on the budget. But go back to the, to the specific question. I can tell you today, Kevin, we have a quite healthy maintenance fund. We have a certain percentage of all, of our yearly budget that attribute to our maintenance, a road maintenance fund. Not only that, any property, excess property, city property that's being sold. They go straight, that fund goes straight to our maintenance fund. The BCR, we got some funding, you know, BCR is getting to sunset. We got that excess 1.7 million dollars going to that fund. So I can proudly say because of our leadership, we made sure we have, so five years from now, the road that we did five years ago. So we have enough fund to sustain, to keep us going. Now, what we need to address is the shortage Mike mentioned earlier. Yes, from the beginning, the 100, 150 million was, was a fake number, wasn't correct. Not to count the three years of COVID. You know, we all know what COVID did to the economy, what COVID did to us in terms of, you know, in terms of chin, material shortage and so on, and, and supply chain issues. So that just still impact our process. That's what contribute to the shortage we have today. We have about, I believe this 56 million for unit 49. Unit 49 will be addressed and that's where we are sure, unit 49 will be last, but we will find a way to get unit 49 taken care of.
So at this point, you can tell me that, and you can tell the residents, that's only one unit that's not, where we have not finished.
That's, that's correct. We're still going, remember it's an eight years process, right? We in year, I believe year six, but unit 49 will be the last to address. That's where the shortage is, I think roughly it's about 56 million, but we will come up.
Donny, kind of, so the residents who are not aware about these units, can you tell them the major corridor where that, that unit 49?
So, so unit 40, 49 is close to the compound. If you go down Osmosis West towards the compound in Madden, that, this is the main intersection.
Yeah, I just want to give the residents a view of where that unit is, just in case you're wondering why my street is not paved, they know if they're lying that unit. Okay, great, any rebuttals?
I just want to touch on, on, on that as well. A lot of that maintenance, or a lot of that maintenance program is they're including a slurry seal that, that is kind of, kind of what GDC got us into the problem we're in right now. So that's kind of one of the things they're using to save money, where the emulsification is a lot lower. But you know, it's a, it's a slurry seal and it, I mean, it seals the road, but I, I don't. I mean, there might be numbers to back it up, but you know, you know, where we are right now kind of backs, backs up my thoughts.
And to answer Donny's question, that number, when I was chairman of the, of the road bond initiative back then, came from a former Public Works director, not saying their names, and you, you probably know who that is. He's no longer with the city, but anyways, let's keep going.
Jarvis Middleton actually brought the 250 and.
Yeah, well, I didn't call any names. All right, let's keep going. Many residents did ask the seat, many residents feel that Palm Bay is growing too fast without enough planning to keep things sustainable. What would you do to promote growth that balance economic development with long-term sustainability? Let's start out with Donny this time.
So, so Kevin, you, you are correct. I mean, we've seen over 20% of growth within the last five years, from 2017 to 2023. The city have grown us over 20%. And, and let me say as well, it's, we're not just seeing this grow. Palm Bay is not the only place seeing that growth. This is, it's, it's a movement of, of people that, that we've seen all over the, remember, we live in the sunshine state. Everybody from up north especially, what a piece of that sunshine state. So we have a lot to offer. So the great exodus, exodus, as they said, right? COVID caused a lot of that, a lot of people didn't, you know, when they move, when they're trying to escape from up north. They, they stop here, they stop here. For a long time, Florida had about 900 people that crossed the border from the north side into our, our state. Now during COVID, that number jumped from 900 per day to 1,300 per day. Guess what, South Florida saturated as well, the tri-county. Guess where they're coming, they're coming here. Growth in a sense, it's inevitable, growth gonna happen. To your point, Kevin, sustainability, it is important. That's something that we have a sustainability, sustainability board, advisory board, where we get the citizens involved, giving us feedback. Yes, certainly, we've seen a rapid growth in a long time. That's why we trying to catch up, that's why we addressing, at the same time, we're addressing our, our public safety. I'm sure you will have a specific question on that. We making move to where we assuring that we're building more fire station, we appropriating funding, jobs. We, we creating an opportunity, economic opportunity to where we inviting new company to come to our city with a bunch of incentive and which hopefully I can, you know, have an opportunity to, to talk about some of these different things we've created. Our administration created. So, um, I, I believe, yes, we are, we've seen a rapid growth in the last five years. But we making things to adjust, to adjust, to adjust to the growth and also create opportunity as well for the people that come here.
Hey, Mike, go ahead, it's your turn.
All right, whatever, can you repeat the question real quick, just so I can make sure?
Many residents feel that Palm Bay is growing too fast without, without enough planning to keep things sustainable. What would you do to promote growth that balance economic development with long-term sustainability?
Well, the first thing that we need to realize is we need to create a self-sustaining Palm Bay. Right now, our, our budget relies on over 80% of what the people give us. The fact of when you look at what Palm Bay, you know, actually gets, it's called a livability score. And we're around a 70. The only thing that we, that we have an A in is our housing is affordable and our cost of living is affordable here in Palm Bay. Our amenities are an F, our commute is a C, crimes a D, employment's a D, health is a D. And, you know, we need to start by bettering those things. That's gonna bring people here, that's gonna bring businesses here. You know, one of the things that I want to start doing is, is, is start giving businesses a reason to be here. Right now, they don't have a reason to be here. Right now, we have our largest group of our highest paid people in Palm Bay is Harris. We should be building our places for them to go eat, places for them to go after work. We need to have a way to bring commercial business here and take that commercial, you know, the, the commercial tax, take the burden off the resident. And, and I would say increase it more for us. I think once we start building a better place for people, it's, it's gonna in turn come better.
Okay, all right. The, you had one minute left on the clock, but you're good.
Oh, you have a minute?
Yeah, you want to.
You know, actually building it to be safer, providing more amenities, like I said, you know, we're an F for amenities. You know, we need to be doing more for people here. We need to have restaurants, I mean, it is, it is, it is awesome. We have a Chipotle and a Dairy Queen in Palm Bay now. But what are we doing to bring in actual businesses that actually provide higher paying jobs? I, I think that's something we need to touch more on. That's one of the reasons I reached out to BMX to bring, you know, to bring them here to Palm Bay. Their ROI shows almost $2.6 million that it brings to a, to a community like ours per annual year. So, and that's just from BMX. I think we need to approach things like that to.
Yeah, and I will be having a question about the compound and that kind of thing here in a minute. So is there rebuttal?
Kevin?
Is there rebuttal?
Yes, yes. So, so Mike did a pretty good job, spilled a lot of information, very fast, very quick. One thing though, I think it's important, it's worth noting. I, I tried to talk from a, from a point of facts. Mike, would you? Uh, Mike, would you, for the audience, mention your source of information? You throw a lot of numbers. Um, would you said where you get this information? Would you state it or uh, for the audience? Cause I think it's important that we speak from a point of facts. Don't just say things, um, make it, make it sound sensational. Um, but I, I can't see, would you repeat it? Would you say, I can't. Can you see Kevin? I, I, I can't see. We, we, can you?
Area vibes dot com.
Okay, how credible is that? I mean, how do we?
A lot of places use it.
I, I, no, I just wanted to state it out there. I think it's important we speak from a fi- a point of fact. Uh, I don't think that's very factual, but let me say, let me counter that a little bit, Mike. Um, it's not the job of the city government to create those things. We create an environment. What we've done, let me tell you what we've done to create these, this administration, what we did. We came up with program like tax abatement, tax endorsement, where we encourage an environment. We create opportunities for this company to come in our city, open those businesses. We said, hey, if you create ten jobs, if you create thirty jobs, we'll give you X tax abatement. It's a very great program because of that. Let me tell you what, what you think despite yours, that's why I'm, I'm, I'm trying to speak from a point of fact. We created twenty-eight hundred jobs in the last three years. Some of them are anticipated job. Walk Valley, you heard about that? Those are fact. Walk Valley.
Trap it up, guys.
N T, Leo, those are a hundred plus thou- a hundred plus thousand dollar jobs.
And plus three hundred of them were.
Plus three hundred and eighteen million of capital improvement. So just to say that with this, that or the other. The other thing I want to say as well, there's a reason.
Oh, Donny, because you only have thirty seconds, we're, we're.
We're saying, we, we, we wanna make sure we speak on a, a point of facts, not just fill things out and give the backing of where you get this information or factual they are, so people.
What a lot of people love.
Okay, all right. So uh, Richard, did you, did you want to opine on what he said before we move on to the next?
Area vibes dot com. And yes, yes, as a city council member, it is not our job or your job to, to do all these things, but you are responsible for the staff that is supposed to be doing this. And when you have a, when you have, you know, and I agree with you on a lot of the things uh, that you want to see in our future. But you know, there's a staff that should be doing that. When the staff isn't doing what you, you know, what you and the council wants to see happening, that's when something needs to be addressed and that is your job.
Okay, all right. Uh, so we can have equal time for, so make sure that you stick with that thirty-second rebuttal, okay? Let's talk about impact fees, guys. Impact fees from new developments are supposed to help pay for infrastructure improvements. Uh, I've seen a lot of commentary on this on social media from the residents. So residents feel that these aren't being used properly, um, and they're feeling short. If, you know, so they're falling short. So what changes would you propose to make sure developers contribute fairly? And the funds are managed effectively. And so we're gonna start with Mike this time around.
I'm gonna say, um, I'd back our council one hundred percent on doing what they're doing right now with impact fees. As of right now, it's looking like they're going towards the maximum that we should be reaching for every four years. You can only reach uh, fifty percent, and I think they're doing the exact right thing they should be doing. On the backside of that, um, I would like to see when the impact fees are mentioned. I would like to see when a community moves into Palm Bay and, you know, especially the ones that have been here. Um, I would like to see the impact fees for those houses taken upfront. So the infrastructure, the police, the fire, the roads, everything can be done uh, before the homes are done. So I think um, it, it, it's not something that's new to people. It's something that, that we were actually doing on a regular basis in twenty sixteen before the new city, um, the new city leadership came in. And I think it's something we need to be doing, that we need to be doing again. Especially when we know, you know, things like this are going to be popping up. It's one of our biggest things is our infrastructure. And I think we're on the right path right now and I commend everybody doing what they're doing. We're gonna go after the, you know, the maximum we can and I think we're on the right track.
Okay, anything else to say? Next thirty seconds. You good? All right, I just want to make sure because you do, you do have time left on the clock. All right, so, uh, Donny.
Kevin, I think, yeah, there, there's an opportunity to uh, to clarify that impact fees are, I, I don't think there's a mismanagement, um, I, I, in, in terms of impact fee. Impact fees are dictated how they should be using by state statute. So it's not what staff is doing for with the impact fees. Impact fees can only utilize, impact fees essentially just the word impact. Is the impact that new development have on our roadways, have on our, uh, the stress that new development put on our, our, our first responders, the, the, the utilization of all parks and, and that's what an impact fee is. Number one, they are collecting, for the most part, they are collecting upfront, they get collected upfront. That's why an impact fee is a major cause for developer upfront. A lot of time, that's what dictate whether a development will move forward or not. Um, and, and we utilize what we call um, uh, proportional fair share. Proportional fair share, new developments come in, hey, you have to bring sewer, wherever it may be, you have to bring water, wherever it may be. So the city looked at their fair share, the impact that new development will have on that roadways. So we, we split the difference or what have you. So impact fees, absolutely, Mike, Mike is correct. We are addressing impact fee accordingly. In the past, there's somewhere it didn't, we didn't raise it. Um, I, I, I for the record, I'm not always a big fan of impact fees because I'm afraid it's gonna be passed on. But I supported impact fees because I understand, I've built, I've built several parts, several, several uh, um, projects. And I, I understand, I paid gladly paid because I know, I, we got to contribute because that new development will have an impact on our community, we have to pay it. But certainly, a lot of these impact fees are dictated by state statute how, for example, why fire, fire impact fees not being used to, to, to hire firefighters. We can't. Impact fee is supposed to be applied for the building of, of, of certain and certain uh, equipments. So it's very specifically by law, by state statute, how impact fees should be used. So hopefully, I hope this little piece of information is helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, one thing to fix that, that a confusion as well is, is impact fees from one, one district can't be used in another district. So if they're building a new, you know, a new development out off of Malabar, you know, or even in three two nine oh nine, for example, if you get impact fees in three two nine oh nine, you can only use those impact fees within three two nine oh nine. So, you know, you can't say, oh, there's a new development out here. Why is this place not getting done because we're getting all these impact fees? It has to be done within that, 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 um, that uh, region.
Yeah, and unfortunately, a lot of residents are not aware of that. I can see the commentary on social media and sometimes I want to correct them, but I was like, you know what?
Things like this that they learn that, so.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm glad we have, yeah, these forums will, will hopefully educate them so they can know, I mean, the impact fees, we can use it for park, right, uh, Donny? Uh, and uh, Mike, we can use it for parking that location.
That's from the pad. We have multiple draws, right? Impact fees for park, impacts is for first responders. So you can only, you cannot co-mangle it.
Right, okay, great. All right, guys, uh, let's move it along. Uh, Donny, you're gonna be up next. And so the question for you is, and uh, and uh, Mike, the, so the county commission recently approved a very big project. And you guys are know who I'm going with this, and this has to do with the Santeria Lakes uh, by Babcock. And it's gonna have a severe impact on the city of Palm Bay, right? We're planning to put over what, twenty-seven hundred homes, I heard, out in that area. So I, my question to you is, how do you plan to address the growth that's gonna, um, gonna impact our area? Um, our traffic, our roads and overall city resources? And are, are we equipped to handle this rapid expansion? What are your thoughts? If you get on the dice, Mike, I, I need to hear from you. What, what would you do to address the concerns of the residents? Especially the, 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 the folks across the street, um, that, um, that will be impacted as well. Uh, go ahead, Mike.
Well, there's a number of things I can say. The first one is, is, is we're not equipped to handle what we have right now. Not even talking about, you know, about growth. Um, on secondly, this is a county project that I don't think we even are able to even have a say in it. Um, I was told and I was leaked something saying that we are gonna be responsible for the city water and the city sewer that is out there. Um, I have not got back a, an actual, a, a, a real answer to it. Um, it is something that I am, I, I, I am following closely. I do not approve it, but I don't think, um, as one council member or even having five up there being against it, we're gonna be able to have any, any say in it whatsoever. Um, I do believe at one point it's gonna be annexed and I, I don't agree with it because as of right now, we're not gonna have any say in it. But you know, one day we're gonna be responsible for it.
Okay.
Donny probably knows a little bit more about it than I do.
Right, yeah, and that's why, that's why I put the question on this, uh, in this, that forum because I know it's gonna have an impact on, on us. So Donny, you, you've been in comments, sitting on the dice, you probably have more information, go ahead.
Without a doubt, no, not, not really. We don't have a whole lot of, this, this was really kind of news to us as well, not just very recently. Um, well, so the, the counter number one, I think my, my touch on that, a relationship, relationship, um, i- is important, right? Building those, that relationship, well, you know, intergovernmental, intergovernmental relationships are, are very critical. Um, I, I think having an understanding, build it that, continue having that conversation. I know when we, uh, when this thing came up uh, first, is, is we, we give uh, staff direction to start, you know, communicating, find out exactly, get a little more, more information on that and how, and, and start having those conversations in the front end. Um, where, where we know how to, uh, you know, how to address that. Certainly our roadways right now, uh, Babcock is of capacity. I, I do agree. I mean, there's no way, just imagine that kind of impact, twenty-seven, twenty-seven hundred home. Um, how much of an impact that would have on, on Babcock currently, um, when it comes to water and, and, and sewer. Now, with that, there's an opportunity because when we provide those services, utility services to another entity, for instance, we provide water to town of Malabar, we provide sewer to all town of Malabar. So when we do so, we are able to make money. I mean, you, you remember, our utility department is a, is an enterprise. They, they self-sustain. Um, they make pretty decent um, revenue from, by, you know, supplying those services. Now, I, I don't know why, it's hard to comment on that because I don't have enough information as of yet. But certainly those conversations need to be had right now as we speak and, and, and to find out exactly. We talked about proportional fair share, the impact twenty-seven hundred home will have on Babcock. So what is the county doing? How we can, they can put their money together uh, forward so we can move forward. I, I know the widening of Babcock is on, is, is on the list of priority for the county, uh, for the T P O, I should say. Um, I know it's not part of the top three. So how can we move that up to, to make sure with, with such a, a, a development? How can we speed that up? So these are the conversation we need to have now. Our staff needs to communicate and us to, to get engaged with our counterpart as well from the county. I, I, I need, let me add that, I'm glad there's gonna be two new county commissioner that, that, that I'm excited about. So.
I will tell you one thing about the relationships, i- is, 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 you know, since I've started doing this, me and Donny, probably talk once a week. We have a great relationship and, and you know, whoever wins, you know, we're still gonna be working together. And, and we both have a great relationship.
Okay, thanks for that.
County commissioners coming in. So I think moving.
Can I segue, um, and ask a question? Because it's not on my list of questions, but um, one of the things I have not witnessed since I've been doing these things is a camaraderie between the Palm Bay City Council and individuals sitting at the county level. I don't see like, I don't know if it's happening or if it's taking place. I, I, and maybe Donny can reflect on that, but I don't see that talking, that meeting of the minds and talking to the residents about the issues in our district. And so, um, hopefully that's something that either of you, if you get, you know, if you get re-elected or if you get elected, can, can, can tackle at some point in time. Because I think we need to see some open forums where the residents are invited and questions are asked and questions and answers are delivered to the residents. That's something I would love to see. Go ahead.
Uh, twenty sixteen was big on the, on the separation of the city and the county. Um, a lot of things went down in twenty sixteen where, where, um, you know, a lot of people's egos got in the way of, of, of uh, what's best for the citizens and, and I don't think.
I remember that, but we're not gonna dwell into that. We will, we could probably gonna need a whole lot of forum for that.
That's why we are where we are and we just have, you know, we have to build a bridge and.
Yeah, that bridge has to be made because, um, I think we are, you know, a lot of burden is being placed on us and then, okay, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I don't want to digress. All right, Fred Poppy Park. Okay, and you probably know where I'm going with this question. Fred Poppy Park is a well-known spot in the community, but given the recent legal troubles with the former co- um, m- a manager of the, you know, Parks and Recreation, Fred Poppy, who was arrested multiple times, uh, is no longer with the city, from my understanding. And some people are wondering, should this park still be named after him? Your thoughts on this, starting with, uh, who went live? I forgot, um. Donny, you got this, go ahead.
Let, let, let me, uh, you know, I can't, I can't speak to that in a couple of different aspect, Kevin. Uh, I think it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a good question that if, if more citizens are talking about it, there's a group of citizens that are talking about it, it's worth, it's worth, uh, of talking about, right? So let me tell you, number one, um, Mr. Poppy on a personal level, I, I think this man is a great man. He gave over forty, forty-plus years, if I'm not mistaken, if not longer, to, to this business. He understands this business, this man a breathe and leave this business. He loved what he does. Um, I, I think naming the park after him, and in fact, I was, that's how far back I go, I was on the parking reg advisory board. I, I'm telling you, I'm one of the longest, maybe youngest, long, yo- yo- longest member in recent days that served on that board. Over eight years, I, 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 I was the chair, vice chair at some point, uh, vice chair and chair. So this man, is he deserving of it? Yes, he was deserving of it. I, I was, was a yes vote for it back then. Now, can we necessarily hold that against him to the point where his, his name should remain on the, this is not something that I personally want, I mean, again, you know, I agree, we should talk about it. Based on that, I think, you know, we all got all fresh out of trouble in life, right? I mean, some of them, uh, some, some public, some private. I, I don't think, this is not something I would want to personally, uh, even discuss in, in terms of making a decision on. Um, and I'm, I'm putting it out there, um, at this time. And, and that's where I'm gonna leave that, uh, Kevin, because I know might be potential, uh, uh, of things going on in the background. Um, but this is not something on a personal level, I don't see uh, enough um, in terms of uh, uh, his, his legal trouble. Um, I, I wouldn't, you know, consider that at this time.
Okay, all right. Go ahead, Mike. What are you talking this?
Fred Poppy has been a parks administrator for fifty-two years. Um, and I do want to touch on the fact that he is innocent until proven guilty. So I, I, I'm one of the people that I kind of don't even really want to even think of that. I mean, it, I've had discussions with a lot of people about it and, and, you know, I, I would like to see where the case goes. Um, I do know that he's no longer a city employee. Um, I do know that he was on a P I P plan prior to this. And, um, you know, after fifty-two years, he'd never gotten any trouble at all, um, at work. Um, he'd never been on, you know, he'd never had anything happen to him at work and he's on a P I P plan after fifty-two years. And when you read what it was about, it was just about, you know, just random things that there's no answer to. So I can't look at, at what's being, you know, given to me and especially an innocent until proven guilty, um, society that we have. Um, I believe if somebody has something going on, like he obviously does, um, we need to be reaching out to him, especially he's given fifty. Especially he's given fifty-two years of service to us and for us just to turn on, you know, our backs on him. Um, you know, I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't excuse what's been done. But, um, you know, as a community, we need to, you know, start putting our hand out for people. Um, especially in a situation like this where I feel like he, you know, he might need a hand. So I, on the backside of that, I just don't think it should be discussed until after everything comes out and a verdict is given.
Okay. Kevin, can I clarify, uh, Mr. Poppy from my understand resigned. He didn't get fired, just so.
Yeah. Just no longer with us.
Yeah. All right. Okay. Thanks for that. Thanks for clearing that up. All right, guys. Thanks for giving your thoughts on that issue because there's a lot of public discourse where that is concerned, as you know. All right. Um, let's talk about public safety and we're kind of running out of time, but we need to get through these questions because a lot of these questions come from the residents. So Republic, uh, Palm Bay is increasing in population as we are aware. Crime rate is on a, uh, you know, is, is going up. Response times to these different areas in the throughout the city is an issue. What steps would you take to strengthen public safety in the city of Palm Bay? And how would you make sure our police and fire departments have what they need to keep residents safe? That's my question. And I will start with, uh, Mike.
Okay, um, I'm going to go back to kind of giving a thumbs up to, you know, our progress that we're going so far. Uh, both police and fire have got new contracts. Um, you know, they're both getting more money now. Um, they're both being able to, to, to provide more things. But on the backside of that, um, you know, we're, you know, two hundred and thirty-eighth out of two hundred and forty-three cities or municipalities in the state on how many officers per person. So, um, there are some things that we need to address and, and, you know, our council is addressing it via our impact fees. Um, our council's already addressed it via, via the new, you know, all the new, uh, all the new things are given, you know, the city. We have a new fire station. Uh, fire station number seven, where the old fire station number one was, we just had the groundbreaking, I want to say a week and a half ago or two weeks ago. And, um, you know, I think we, you know, we've realized what we're doing or what we need. Now we need to make the steps forward. You know, one thing I don't like is our fiscal year starts off in October one. Um, here we are, October one, and in the last, you know, two months, these things are being addressed. Where, where one thing I would want to see, you know, from my staff moving forward is police and fire be put as a priority. So when we first get the money and that, and our fiscal year starts over on October one, police and fire is something we should be talking about now in the new fiscal year and not wait until the end of our fiscal year to do that. And I think that's, uh, something that can, you know, be helped moving forward.
Okay, great. Thank you, uh, Donny.
Kevin, I think that's, that's a great question. So, so, um, I, I think Mike mentioned it, yeah, the, but this council, I'm, I'm part of, I think it, it's pretty much unanimous with this council where from day one, we've decided we're going to make, uh, our public, public safety, uh, a priority, uh, of our first responders. Make sure to address, uh, their needs. I remember in, uh, twenty twenty, twenty twenty, um, the December of twenty twenty, one of the first vote I casted and I'm super proud of it. If you remember back then, our, our police department, we had such a, such a major bleeding. It, it, we were, I mean, the moment we hire a new hire, you know, we had somebody else from the county, another agency from the county, they were snatching them from us because we weren't paying them enough. Well, first vote I took was in, I never forget, was in late November, either late November of, uh, first week of December. We gave, across the board, we gave everybody a six percent raise. We automatically bumped their, their rate. And we continue in that sense, right? We, if you remember OPAFAN, the COVID, what we referred to COVID money. We, the city of Palm Bay had eighteen million, a big portion of it. We set things aside, money aside, to address police and fire needs where we bought them new, uh, 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 cameras and, and, and new equipment, new, uh, you know, uh, police, uh, cars. So we did everything we could, Kevin, to proper equip our department, including, you know, addressing internal things, you know, with, with Chief, uh, Mario Ojello. He brought things like the wellness, uh, center, um, with, within. So to address their mental and to address their pay. We recent.
Um, I don't know what happened. We lost him. Uh, let's see if he comes back.
He might have got a phone call. I know that's what happened to me last time. That's what it did.
Let's see, let's see, let's see. We were doing so good. Technology is a funny thing. Um, sorry folks, this is what happens with technology sometimes. He may have gotten a phone call. I don't know if he logged in on his phone, et cetera. Um, don't know what happened there. I'll give it a couple of minutes here before he maybe trying to log back in. There he is. There he is.
I'm so sorry. I think, uh, but anyway, uh, as, as I was saying is that we did everything we can. We just recently negotiated their contract. We currently have the best contract, the best contract, top three in the county where no longer we can lose. Now we're attracting new people, leaving other agencies throughout the county to come work for Palm Bay. So this is what some of the things we've done to be able to, to attract new, and, and Mike did mention, uh, the challenge we have with, with, uh, with, with, uh, call, uh, response time. Yes, we, we have an issue, but those are issues where we are, as they come, we are addressing them. And I want to touch as well, um, something, uh, uh, Mike mentioned. Is that all budget, every department of, uh, uh, provide their budget, um, fiscal, what they think they're going to need toward the year. But as we go throughout the year, we got new needs that arise. So we are addressing things such as, you know, new police officer. That's why we relying on, on, on designated fund balance. So to provide equipment as they come, you may budget for this and something change, you know, then, then these things are being addressed. That's why we rely on, on, on designated balance, um, to address those needs.
We gotta keep moving, um, Donny because of time. So, uh, it is, do you have a rebuttal, Mike? Or are you good? Okay. All right. All right. Um, let's talk, uh, guys about, um, or, um, we talk about, so we addressed that, um, let's, what question do I want to go to because of the time? Let's talk about economic, economic development. Attracting new businesses and supporting economic growth is crucial to Palm Bay's future. What's your vision for promoting economic growth beyond the usual retail business? You know, you hear, you hear people complain a lot about the, um, the dollar stores, the gas stations, the, the.
Already?
Uh?
Didn't we address this one?
I, I, I think.
Not quite, not quite.
It's close to it.
Yeah, we're close to it. How would you make sure it doesn't disrupt the correct of the city? That's, that's where I'm going. I'm looking at the correct of the city. How do you, how do you retain the correct of the city? Um, uh, whose turn it was? I think it was Donny's turn to go first. Go ahead.
Yes, uh, Kevin, one, one other thing we did, our administration did in twenty twenty-one. Um, what we did, we, we got together with our stakeholders, uh, our businesses, the developers, everybody that invests in our city. And we came up with, I apologize, there. Yes, we, we came up with a, a few ideas to what do all the, the, you know, the, the, the community, the business community, what do they want from us? What can we do to, to encourage, you know, investment in our community? That's where the program of tax, uh, ad valorem tax of, uh, abatement came from. So out of that, and I can tell you again, I mentioned earlier, twenty-eight hundred jobs. Some of them are not quite there yet, but anticipating job, those are good paying job. Of five companies, okay? Five companies out of that program, Business Improvement District, um, Hubzone. We talked about new market tax credit, Opportunities Zone. So these are things that we've created that's currently in the book to attract new businesses, to create that sustainability that we've been talking about. Now, in terms of, you're talking about, you know, Dollar General, yes. So the optics of it, yeah, it seems like that's what, that's all that's coming. Or, or, you know, the latest is, is those, uh, storage units. But understand one thing though. Some of these things, we don't necessarily have, if they meet the requirement, we cannot pick and choose to some degree, we, we have counsel understanding the legal aspect. A lot of these projects, if they meet the zoning, there's so much we can do. If we cannot come up with a valid reason where we should de- deny their, their, their application. We can't, we putting the city in jeopardy. So we cannot say Dollar General, we don't like you, therefore, no, we, we don't want you here. We can't do that legally. We can't.
Yeah, so.
So people got to understand that. There's so much we can do, but we create those opportunities for new businesses to come talk.
And I'm glad you cleared it up because I see a lot of, uh, social media commentary and, uh, folks don't understand that if the council flat out denied the project, it puts the city in harm's way, um, legally. And so a lot of folks don't realize that. So thanks for clarifying that. Mike, your turn. Do you want to address?
Yeah, me myself, I just feel like, you know, Palm Bay is that SoundCloud rapper that just put their music on SoundCloud and they're not, but, you know, marketing it. They're not getting it out to people. We have, we have more potential, we're only like almost fifty percent built out. We have more potential than any city along the whole East Coast. But we don't have a way of getting it out to people to come here. We have these great ideas and it's awesome. These great ideas are coming up. And, and I just feel we do not have the people that are pushing what we have out to the right people. Because right now, that, you know, I went out to BMX, I approached them. And they're super interested whether, you know, you know, whether it follows through. We have good motion for it. I think it's going to be something that's good. But, um, I don't think we have the people that are getting out to these actual investors, to these business owners. Um, you know, you know, you know, bringing more than a Chipotle and, and, uh, and a Dairy Queen to us since, you know, I, I, I just don't, I don't think we're getting out to the right people. And, and you know, it's something that I worked on in twenty sixteen. I made a series of videos. Um, I worked with Harris. Um, and I got with a bunch of the people that worked there and I got, um, I answered them or, or I asked them questions like we're doing right now. And I put these videos together and I sent it to investors that came here and actually invested in Palm Bay. And, and for a while, we were, we were booming a new commercial business. Twenty percent of the business that was coming in here to Palm Bay was business and not so much residential. And I think we need to get back to that. I think we need to invest in, in, in better people and, and getting our name out there. You know, there's, you know, you know, I don't think we're marketing Palm Bay how we should because right now we're just coming, you know, we have the people that are coming here, one, because it's convenient and one, because it's cheap. We don't have people coming here because they want to be here. We don't have people that are, that are inspired to be in Palm Bay and want to be part of Palm Bay. We used to have that. We had a group of, of venture capitalists that I worked with, a guy in, in Washington DC that wanted to build a downtown here. Um, you know, you know, you know, the Margaritaville was, was originally supposed to come here. There's a lot of things that, that we have the potential for growth. There's nobody that has more potential for us. I think we just need the right resources to get who we are and what our council and our staff is doing right now to bring them in.
Okay. So that's a nice segue to my next question. And, uh, if you forgive me, let's forego the, the thirty-second rebuttal because of time. Um, but downtown Palm Bay, pet peeve of mine, when am I getting it? And let's start with the incumbent, uh, Donny. Because I need to know what has been done from the city's point of view to attract the business that's going to help create this. Because I, it's like I see nothing's been done and I've been here since two thousand nine. It's been talks and talks and talks and that I don't see the progress. So when are we going to see progress on this forefront?
Ke- Kevin, I, I can tell you, we, we, this council create, created a vision. The MBA, uh, the, uh, uh, BMU, like the, the Bayfront, the Bayfront community from Malabar north all the way to RJ Conlon. So that whole river corridor, that US one corridor, that's where we envision a potential downtown. I can tell you currently there's an investor that currently own over thirty parcels along that corridor. These things, the reality of the matter is you've been here nine years. I've been here twenty years, Kevin. These things take time. They take time. The process, it's not for lack of trying. It's not for lack of this council telling, telling these people what we need or where we need them. It's a matter of, yes, we create the environment. So the gentleman that bought, or, or, um, or Marina, the former, you know, uh, Marina. So the same, that same client, oh, I mean, that same investor owns quite a bit of parcel. He's not the only one. There's others. We got to take a few things in consideration. It's not just a quarter property. It's, it's, it's market conditions as well. Market constantly changing. We got COVID. We had to deal with in the last three years. So there's a lot to take into, to consideration. We don't, we don't snap our finger. If it was up for us, Kevin, with you, I'm with you. I want a downtown too. But we got to take a lot into consideration. Market condition is one of them. What do the market need at what time? It's not all my money or yours. It's those investors. They looked at, always constantly looked at the bottom line. We create that vision. They get it. That's why we particularly, we particularly pick and choose who purchased those property, the surplus property along that corridor. So people that capture the vision, that understand that this is what council want. We will have a downtown, but I can tell you what we most likely will have now is those, is those fifteen minutes communities. We have Ashton Park coming up, um, um, you know, Emerald Lake still, still in, still there. Okay. Emerald Lake's still there. We may have, we, right down that corridor there, we may have three um, project that create, that give us that downtown feel within their own, you know, the way it's going to be developed. So Kevin, I don't know how soon, I cannot give you a date, but we will, I believe in our lifetime, we will see it.
Mike, would you allow me? Because he just said something that got my ears.
Of course, of course.
Emerald Lakes is still in play?
Emerald Lakes is still in play. Yeah, they, they add, they, they did have a change of, of, uh, last I've heard, as recently as last month, we had a change of partnership because the, the fifteen hundred acres is owned by was a four, I believe it's four investor. Uh, Mr. Pelosi, we know that, that the leader of, of that, he, he's been leading that, that, that whole movement for last fifteen, twenty years. He's still in the game. I believe last we've heard, there's still, it's still on the table. I think it was a partnership change where he had to buy out one of the partners and so on and so forth. Last we know, it's still part of the conversation. But we may have others that come before. Ashton Park is one that most likely we may see before, um, Emerald Lakes.
Okay. Mike, do you want to pine on this question?
Yeah, there's a couple of things. First one, um, I'm glad he mentioned that Marina because, um, from what I've been told, um, that Marina is a go and they want to build here. But, um, they're having a, a hiccup with, um, FWC. So if I am elected, that's one of the first things, you know, you know, as in business-wise, getting them here that I'm going to work on. I think, I think that's something that should have been put on the table the second that he told anybody with any kind of authority at the city. Because that's huge. Having something in our, you know, over there in the bay would be a great start. Um, secondly, um, I'm, I, I love your downtown idea. Um, and I don't know if you've seen it, but I showed you the renderings for the downtown district that was presented. And, um, the district that Mr. Felix is talking about was the BCRA. And I want to say it's, um, sunsetted already. If it hasn't, it's going to be really soon. But, um, it's one of the things they were working on. There was a guy by the name of James Marshall. He was working with the venture, or the venture capitalists to build the downtown district all the way from the Aqua Development all the way to the corner of, of, of John Conlon, where John Conlon meets A one, or, uh, US one, all the way down to where it meets Harris. And what it is, is it's, it's a downtown district, but if you've ever been to Winter Park, it's not a downtown like, you know, downtown Melbourne. It has shops, it has places that close at like eleven, eleven thirty at night, it has restaurants. It has, um, it has more of an eclectic feel than a downtown and let's party. You have, you know, forty nine hundred people that work at Harris and want somewhere to go, want somewhere to go to lunch. And everybody says, let's build it, you know, in the middle of Palm Bay. People aren't going to go to lunch there, they're going to be at their jobs uh, in other places. Because Palm Bay doesn't have industrial, we don't have the jobs that Melbourne and stuff do. But in that area, in John Conlon, we do have the jobs. We do have people that want to go and eat. We do have people that want to go places after work. And right now, everybody's spending their money in Melbourne. You know, we don't have the amenities that the other people do. And I love your, I, I love your downtown idea. And you know, I have those renderings I can show you. Um, I even have the original renderings from when uh, Margaritaville wanted to come here. So i- i- it's, it's uh, you know, it's there and you know, I talked to James Marshall and he said that those venture capitalists are, would love to come back if they can get a commitment from the city, that they're not going to push them away again.
Right.
Oh, I mean, it's there, the ability is there, we just need, you know, a motivated team to go for. And that's, yeah, it, it's, it's, it's just, we need, you know, give it a little push.
Yeah, we, we need a little push, we, we need to get this over the, over the rail. Um, guys, we need to wrap this up, but I, I do have um, two important questions I need to ask before we wrap up and you give your closing remarks. And I want to touch on housing affordability and homelessness and before we wrap up. Uh, the first one, housing affordability has become a real issue with prices going up and fewer options for low and middle in, uh, income uh, families. What policies would you put in place to ensure there's enough affordable housing? And how would you prevent long-term residents from being priced out? Um, I forgot who's turning was at this point in time, I think it's going to be Donnie, right?
Yeah, so.
Because Mike lost, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, before, I can't tell you Kevin, and I'm proud to say it, I'm the only one on council right now that is, I, I should say I'm the loudest voice when it comes to uh, um, um, housing affordability. Number one, we should consider it Kevin, it's, it's encourage the, the uh, a diverse, a diverse style of housing, diverse style of housing. What I mean by that is, what you've seen in the past is, is a, a single family. Single family are being built all throughout the city. Eighty percent of all housing today is single family. What we've done, what I changed and I asked, and, and anytime I'm, you know, talking to a developer, said we need to bring a diversity into uh, uh, our housing. And, and give us some, those, those townhomes, those condos. That because a, a young person just starting out, a young teacher, a young police officer, they may not be able to afford a, a eighteen hundred square foot home, but they can afford that twelve, fourteen hundred, you know, townhome. Uh, or, or condo. Uh, so number one, that, that's one aspect. We need to uh, continue to encourage that and we've done, I've done a great job at that. So what I did as well, to, on the, on that same topic, is asking, and I'm the only one on council that would, that would uh, uh, hold the applicants accountable. When it comes to uh, uh, apartment project, for example. My question to them, if you want my support to support your project, how much of your project you will dedicate for affordable housing or workforce housing? And this is, I'm the, probably the only one on council that really challenge today. That will really challenge those builders, I want twenty percent, I want, can verify that. So, and I will continue to do so, I will continue to do so. I made it clear out there that this is, we got to make sure, as you said Kevin, we don't price out of low rate uh, wages workers out of our city. You know, our first year police officer, or now, now they're getting paid a little bit better. Maybe they can afford a two-bedroom apartment because prior they couldn't. All right, or McDonald's shift manager, or teachers. So the question is, every time that comes up, a project comes up, you, you better believe I'm going to make sure to ask them to de- dedicate a certain percentage of their project to affordable hous- uh, affordable housing. So I hope I answered your question, Kevin.
You did, you did. Thank you so much. Um, Mike, your turn.
I will say this, and I want you to leave his, I want you to leave his, his face up here for a second.
Okay.
Because I'm going to disagree with him. He has never, ever settled for ten percent. It's always been twenty percent or he's not happy. So I will say that.
Thank you, thank you.
On, on, on one thing I will, I will say is, I don't think any housing is affordable anymore. Um, I think we're using this term affordable housing to move people, you know, to give these developers a place to be. And um, there's never a guideline. And I think I actually heard Mr. Felix say something um, the other night when uh, because the city awarded Macedonia more money, or I, I want to say property and money for, you know, more housing and affordable housing. And one thing I don't think that's been addressed is, is how long it has to be affordable housing. And um, I think what's happening is these housing developments are coming in and you know, they're using the ruse of affordable housing. And five years later, they're luxury condos and, and, and nobody can afford it. Um, I think that's something that we need to dive into and see who's gotten, who's gotten the funding. And um, you, you know, I'm not the biggest, you know, on a knowing the things to do for affordable housing, but we should have a heck of a staff that has great ideas for us to come through. And as one city council member, we can't really have all the answers and we can't make a decision on our own. We have to work as a team to come up with what, what we feel. And the best thing to, you know, to feel is, yes, we should have, you know, more affordable housing. Do we have it? No. Are the options that we've been giving so far good? No. So I think that needs to be addressed and, you know, I think it's, you know, on the side's been addressed. But we, it needs to be handled a little better and, and um, you know, not just one person, you know, you know, being an advocate for it, we need to have five and then a whole staff being an advocate for it as well.
Okay, gentlemen, um, thanks for letting me forego the rebuttals because this would prolong even more and we run out of time. Homelessness, so a law went into effect today, I'm pretty sure you guys probably know this, that pretty much says, and the residents probably aren't aware, for those who are watching this, or will be watching this at a later point, that says that pretty much to summarize it, I had a long spiel, but I want to summarize. You know, if a homeless person is caught sleeping outside, they're going to be arrested, right? If they're caught sleeping anywhere, they're going to be arrested. Uh, on the beaches, in the parks, on the sidewalks, et cetera, any public spaces, they will be arrested. And that's pretty much the law and uh, that's a state law. And if cities and counties do not enforce this law, I think what this, and what I surmise is that the, the state can come down on the cities and counties. And so, um, and that will start sometime in January. When that day will start implementing that rule of coming down on cities and counties. This may have a severe impact on the city of Palm Bay. So my question to you gentlemen, um, what do you think about this law? Is it, is it a fair law? And given the, the Palm Bay City Council's current situation with resources and the capacity, how would you ensure that compliance is met with this law? If you're on the dice, what would you do to make sure that our staff, um, or public servants and um, make sure that they're in, in compliance? And what steps would you take to avoid potential lawsuits while still providing support for the homeless population? So who wants to take this first? I forgot where we left, no, I think, you want to take it, Mike? Okay, go ahead.
Um, I, on mine, I don't know a lot of the things that we're even allowed to do for the homeless. I was actually told, um, I, I, I'm not even allowed to give food to homeless people. Um, so you know, there's a lot of things that need to be addressed. One, the only people that have been, that have been, been doing anything for the homeless people are the police department. It's not their job to go and, and you know, maintain the people that can't afford to live. That's, that's insanity to me, especially when we don't have anything to provide for them. It's, 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 I get it if it's like, okay, here's our resources. If you're not using our resources, yes, it's illegal. But it's like, as of right now, it's, we don't have any resources for you, but it's illegal to survive. So I don't agree with it. I think there are things that we need to touch, you know, that we need to touch base on. I mean, we can't even, you know, like the city's not even allowed to raise their impact fees over fifty percent over four years, but we're going to tell these people that they need to find, you know, that they need to find somewhere to live right now. You know, there needs to be steps, there needs to be options and we're not giving them any options. And, and you, I mean, people can argue homelessness is a choice, it's this and that, but I don't. I, I feel we should have compassion. I think we should be doing more as a community for homeless people. And um, it's just a slippery slope to even do anything because the, I mean, these are God's people. These are one time, you know, someone's baby, someone's son, someone's daughter. And they're sitting there living, you know, in this rain. This storm just went through and somebody was living in a bush. That is, that is, you're going to put somebody in jail for that. I, I just, I can't stand by it.
I'm, I'm right here with you, buddy. I'm right here with you. Me and my wife, we have a, a thing every year. We um, at around Easter time, we drive around, we cook dinner, we prepare and we pretty much hand it out. That's our way of giving it back. Every Easter, that's something that we do. And um, yes, I'm with you. Donnie, you take it.
Yeah, Kevin, I, I think, yeah, I think that's just an excellent question. I appreciate your touch base on that. I think, uh, I'm going to straight out and say it, it, it's, it's, it's an unfair law. Um, we've seen, we've seen things like that. You, sometimes you question, and it might kind of touch on that, you question the, 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 eh, eh, you know, the, the human aspect, the human aspects, i- i- it's almost like it wasn't taken consideration at all. Some of these laws, and, and we've seen that at the state, our neighboring city. You remember, I mean, I remember, and I'm going to call it out, and, and uh, uh, Melbourne had a similar uh, um, harsh law about a year or two ago. If we remember the, the discussion, bringing the daily bread right in our community. It's because part of it, the city government in Melbourne, they passed a law in, in their downtown, trying to chase away those, those folks that live down there or pen handling, they call it, or whatever they do, they wanted to chase them out of downtown Melbourne. Uh, it was a harsh law, nothing as harsh as, as what the state uh, is getting ready to implement. I'm going to call it out for what it is, the, 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 the human aspect of it, absolutely zero consideration when it comes to that, it's a break my heart. Uh, if you look them on my feed, um, um, my Facebook feed, feed, you'll see me Saturday, this past Saturday, joining a group, a group of, and, 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 and I wanted to say that to say this. One of the good, a group of churches, a couple of churches, one from uh, Palm Beach County, they have a sister church here, every other Saturday, they come here, they meet all, they, they, they feed, they take, they provide footfall homeless, um, here, right here in the corner of uh, Malabar and Bob Con. I was with them, spent the time with them. More importantly, not only to feed them, uh, their body, provide for, for their physical need, they also pray with them. They share the gospel. I spent time with them and really that made my day this past weekend, just this past Saturday, that's what I was doing. Just to tell you, this is important to me, Kevin. I was the very first one, when we were talking about our COVID money, how do we apply our COVID money? We realized homelessness is an issue, affordable housing is an issue. How can we make, and the services that comes with that? I was the very first one, I said, I said to staff and my colleague, and I'm glad they went along with me. I said, if we're going to address those issues and put some money into them, let's just, let's take it seriously, let's put serious money into it. Instead of a, a million dollars, our staff suggested, so we end up with five million dollars to address those three things. Homelessness, affordable housing, and um, the services that comes with that. Just to tell you, I'm a champion for that and I want to continue to do more. And here's what I would uh, want to do, uh, Kevin, moving forward, is those folks, the Brevard Homeless Coalition, I think they should be doing more because they have unlimited funding. They, well, they have a lot of funding, um, they have direct, their direct source of funding is the state. So they need to be doing more, especially in Palm Bay. We are the largest city, we probably have a larger uh, homeless community. They need to be doing more within our community. We don't have a, a homeless shelter, I don't need to tell you guys that. So we need to see, okay, as this law getting ready to, to, what is the plan? My understanding is part of it too, the, the state should be giving resources to those community, to the county, to where we can provide a place for these people to, 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 a habitat for these people. If we're going to chase them uh, uh, off, off our streets. So certainly, I think the church, it should be an effort where government and the non-for-profit, especially all churches, that I believe that's amended from the Bible, right? We should take care of the homeless, of the needy, the listies, those are those folks. So I'm willing to, like I did Saturday, join that, those churches in feeding the homeless every other Saturday. I'm inviting you guys to join us, um, not this coming Saturday, the Saturday after. A church for more, right here in our local community. And what an example that was, and that's truly, this is what we need to be doing more of. Yes, Mike, we should, we, you can feed them. You can be, you know, there's no laws I know of that can prevent you from buying food for the homeless. I've done, I've dropped by, I've seen somebody need, I'll stop by and give them food, give them water, you know, hang out and have a conversation, five minutes to, to know these people, sometimes it's just mind blowing. When, how they end up there, I'm always particularly interested.
I would rather give them the food than to give them money. And that's what I've, I've taught my son over, over time in, in life. I said, you pass them and you feel in your heart to, to do something, don't give them money, rather give them the food. Uh, if you, if you just drive to Chick-fil-A, buy them the food and hand it to them, not so much cook, but buy the food, get handed to them, that's, that to me would be a better deal. But anyways.
That, it's like, you know, we don't have enough police officers already.
Yeah.
Now we're going to have them dealing with this.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be overwhelming, yeah.
Look at court dates, we gotta, you know, we gotta worry about providing them a public defender at fifty dollars an hour.
I, I don't know, Donnie, from the city level, if um, since you're currently sitting on the dice, if a letter could be sent to the state legislature saying, hey, listen, um, you know, this is already passed. However, we feel is unfair, is going to be a burden to our city, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, but that makes us a, you know, that makes us a, a place of refuge.
That too.
So I mean, it is something, you know, it needs to be addressed. And you need to have proper resources. And what we're doing right now should, should have been after all resources have been measured and not to start with.
Yeah, and I think we're the only state that's doing this, right? Not, we're the only state that's doing this, yeah, we're the only state that's doing this. So anyways, let's wrap up guys, because we are well over time. And so we're going to give each of you uh, your, your opportunity to give the closing remarks. And um, so we had agreed to uh, two minutes for the closing statements. So uh, who wants to go first?
Donnie, you can go first, sir.
Well, I started, Mike, you sure you don't want to go first?
I will, um.
All right, hold on, hold on, Mike, let me remove everybody from the screen so you can.
Okay. Uh, first off, I want to thank you, Kevin. Thank you for uh, um, everything that you do for our community, every, you know, all the help that you do. You're always, always trying to get everybody involved, getting us involved, getting, you know, me and Mr. Felix, you know, you know, on here talking to our community. I want to thank, you know, Donnie for having a awesome campaign, respectful, been a gentleman the whole time. Um, you know, I, I've, you know, at the end of this, I've met a lot of good people. Um, I, I've, I would say this is one of the hardest things I've ever done in my life. Um, and it's not even, you know, you know, just, you know, just to be in a campaign, you know, you know, he, he, I would say managing my campaign, it's things that I've, that I've learned on the way. Um, I've learned, you know, being a leader of the community, you're, you're a leader not just for your home, but you're a leader for a hundred and forty thousand people. Um, you know, we lost uh, Staff Sergeant Tristan Wright. And one of the most hardest things I've ever done in my life was follow his body back here. And he was a hero. My son thinks of him as a hero. And you know, I just want to be thankful for everything that we have here. Thank everybody for the opportunity, for the support, for your support, Kevin, for um, everything that we have going forward. I think uh, the city has a lot of potential. Um, and you know, I think, you know, we have two paths to take. Um, you know, you know, coming up in this election and it's, it's um, I think we. I think we need to start the accountability tour uh twenty twenty-four. And um, you know, start, start making people accountable for the things that we want to see in Palm Bay and not um you know, just, just, you know, here it is, we're doing what we can. Um, I I I need to see results, or I'm going to find somebody who can give me the results. And I'm done.
Okay, sir. Thank you. One second, let me remove from the screen and let's bring Donnie up. All right, Donnie.
Kevin, thank you so much for the opportunity. I I truly, it's invaluable, the service um you you provide for the community because, you know, I I can tell you, we all have different talents. What you do, I cannot do. So uh certainly, you know, I I certainly appreciate it. Mike as well, I mean, you'd be nothing but a gentleman as well. I I would say the same. And uh and you you definitely, definitely uh I I told you that private and public, you you changed my my view. I didn't know you. I don't think we ever met, but but certainly, you know, the idea, it's always important to get to know people, right? You get to know people, then you're like, wow, okay. Uh, so you you really give me that feeling. I certainly appreciate it. Um, as we said, we we both agree, win or lose, and 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 this relationship should should uh continues. Um, and I think you have a lot of a lot to offer. Um, certainly um would continue that that conversation. Um, I'd say with that, I'd say, you know, the the choice is yours, you know, on on November fifth. I mean, hopefully you don't wait till November fifth. You start voting as of next week. Uh, mail ballots coming out. I would certainly um ask that you you uh you you uh keep me, keep me in the position. I want to believe that um I've done great work. Um, definitely have Palm Bay's best interests at heart. Um, every decision I made, every vote I take, I never think about my next election. In fact, I'm probably the only one on council that 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 freely, I freely vote. I don't have anybody from higher up or from political party that in my ears, you know, saying that you vote this way, you did that. I'm probably the only free agent. So I want to continue to fight for you, to be that guy, okay, that cares, to be that guy that care about this community. I'm vested. I pay thousands and thousands of dollars in in tax, tax, in tax every year. Um, I'm, my grandson's growing here, my my kids are growing here. I'm vested in this community. I want to leave a better place for them. I want to leave a better place for for your kids as well. Please give me an office, give give me another four years to continue to fight for you. Um, certainly, experience matter, experience count. I think uh it's it's pretty clear. Um, the the experience that I've acquired um even before council, the last four years on council, I want to continue to put it to work for you and continue to work hard for you. Thank you so much again. My name is uh Donnie Felix and and you can check me out, votedonniefelix.com. Um, or you can also email me, votedonniefelix@gmail.com. Thank you so much. Three two one two zero five three nine four two. I would love your support, your time and 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 your donation as well. Thank you.
Gentlemen, um, I want to thank you both for joining me tonight and thanks for uh accepting the invitation to be on the platform so we can discuss the issues that is affecting the citizens that we serve. And um and I say that hilariously, I'm not an elected official, but I I always um strive to think that I am serving my community. This is this, this is how I was raised, right? And this is just embedded in me. I went to the military and this, everything that you see is the stuff that's been in instilling me over time that, hey, listen, always find a way to give back. And this is my giving back. And um so folks.
When I af- after filed, remember?
Yeah, yeah, so. So um, yeah, I remember you contacting me and asking me for advice and opinions and that kind of thing. And and I like that, and you know, and 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 I do get a lot of those calls, Republicans, Democrats. They call me, hey, Kevin, I see you have this platform. I know you've been around, you're doing this and et cetera, et cetera. I need your opinion. And 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 I, you know, when you get to that level where your folks are calling me for your opinion, you're like, hmm, they really value your advice. So I I I I'm like, okay, so this, I got something going on here. But anyways, um I thank you again. Um, and we're going to go watch this, the ending of the debate if it's still happening. So um have a good night, gentlemen. I will see you soon. Good luck on the campaign trail and um hopefully you, I will be able to reach you on campaign day if you do do win and we can talk about your victory. And so good night, guys, and talk to you soon.
Good night. All right, I'll go. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
For joining, we are a little bit behind. So if you're just tuning in now as the broadcast is live, we are already in the midst of the Texas debate between Ted Cruz and Colin Allred. But for people who haven't caught it yet or who or who are watching this once it's already uh concluded, I wanted to do the entirety of this debate because I think it's especially important um in light of the fact that the Texas Senate race has pretty much gone down to the margin of error here. So without further delay, let's uh let's tune in. We're going to start this debate from the beginning and uh watch Ted Cruz and Colin Allred face off.
To discuss their philosophies and explain how they are different if one of them is elected, when one of them, rather, is elected to represent us in the US Senate for the next six years.
First, the rules for this debate. Both candidates agreed to the following. Candidates will get ninety seconds to answer a question. His opponent then gets ninety seconds to respond. And we will go back to the first candidate for a sixty-second rebuttal. An additional follow-up of sixty seconds will be at the discretion of the moderators.
We have several countdown clocks in the studio here with us that the candidates can see tonight to help keep them on track time-wise. Finally, both candidates will get one minute each to introduce themselves here in just a moment. At the end of the debate, they will get another sixty seconds for a closing statement. Now let's welcome the candidates for US Senate in Texas tonight, Democrat Colin Allred and Republican Ted Cruz. Gentlemen, thank you each for being here tonight. Uh, Mr. Allred, you won the coin toss for the opening introduction to go first. You chose to go first. You have sixty seconds, sir. The floor is yours.
Well, thank you all for moderating. And Senator Cruz, thank you for joining. I'm Colin Allred. I'm a fourth-generation Texan. I'm a husband and a father. I was raised here in Dallas by a single mom who's a public school teacher, and I've been shaped by every part of this state. My grandfather was a customs officer in Brownsville. That's where my mom and I were born and raised, where I spent a lot of my childhood. I was captain of the Baylor football team in Waco, trained for the NFL draft in Houston, and I've served my hometown in Dallas in Congress the last six years. In that time, I've been the most bipartisan Texan in Congress. I'm the exact opposite of Senator Cruz, who's the most extreme senator in the United States Senate, maybe the most extreme in the last thirty years. But that's not enough. He's also only focused on himself. That's how you can go to Cancun when millions of Texans need you and hundreds are dying. The truth is, we don't have to be embarrassed by our senator. We can get a new one. That's what this election is all about. That's what I'm asking Texans to give me a chance to do.
Senator, you have sixty seconds for your opening statement.
Thank you, Gromer. Thank you, Jason. Thank you to everyone at home listening. You know, Texas is an incredible place. I'm the son of an immigrant who came from Cuba with nothing, penniless, washed dishes, making fifty cents an hour, but came to Texas to seek out the American dream. And Colin Allred is the son of a single mom who became a football star. He went on to Baylor, went on to the NFL. Now he's a United States Congressman. It is incredible that both Congressman Allred and I have the great privilege of representing the people of Texas in the United States Congress. Tonight, I'm going to ask you to listen very carefully to the difference between words and actions. Colin Allred is going to try to say an awful lot of words that sound reasonable. But what he's not going to talk about is his own record or my record. And I'm over and over again going to take us back to actual records, his record and my record. We're doing an awful lot right in the state of Texas. Colin Allred wants to change that. I want to keep Texas, Texas.
Senator, that is your time. We do want to begin the debate tonight with two big issues that are personal to Texans. Senator, the first question is for you. Texas has one of the strictest abortion bans in the United States. There's no exception for rape or for incest, as you.